We've been in closed session under section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code and no action was taken. Welcome. We appreciate your interest and your being here tonight and your continued support of the Waco Public Schools and your interest in the goings-on in this community. I also want to welcome anybody watching at home on Channel 17. Because we have a pretty large crowd tonight, if you have a cellphone or iPad with you this evening, if you will turn it off or at least put it on silent, we'd appreciate it. And I will remind you as I do every month that the Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or to solve problems of individuals. As management, it's the sole responsibility of the Superintendent and her staff. Once again, welcome, and we're glad you're here, and we will get through the agenda as quickly as we can. At this time, we'll move on to item five and ask that you join me as we pause for a moment of silence for prayer, contemplation, reflection, or meditation. Thank you. And I have been asked to take one matter out of order, and so assuming there's no objection, we're going to move down to item 10A, approve to offer, to employ, the Superintendent finalist. Folks at home are probably aware, we've gone through an intensive process of finding the next Superintendent to lead the Waco Public Schools as Dr. Kane is retiring at the end of this year. We brought in six individuals for interviews, and it very clearly and quickly became apparent that we had a potential to bring in somebody who could be truly transformational in this community, who has the experience and talent to communicate with a number of diverse constituencies and communities within Waco ISD, and we think we are very blessed and lucky, and we're very excited to have him join us. Not that I'm trying to influence anybody's vote up here, but that's my, because we haven't voted yet, I forgot about that. So, at this time, I will entertain a motion to hire Dr. Marcus Nelson as the next Superintendent of the Waco Public Schools in accordance with the contract that was presented in closed session.
Mr. President.
Mr. Slacks.
I move that the Board approve execution of the contract naming Dr. Marcus Nelson as the next Superintendent of the Waco Independent School District.
Thank you, Mr. Slacks. Sir, a second. Thank you, Mr. Pettis. Any other questions, comments, or discussions? All right, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, you don't get to vote. You're in a hurry to get out of here, aren't you? All those opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
That's eight-zero, Mr. Slacks.
And with that, we'll go back up to the regular order, and we'll go to the Pledge of Allegiance, item number six. Dr. Kane?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we're pleased to have two students from GW Carver Middle School to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please welcome seventh grader Antoinese Proctor and eighth grader Stephen Johnson.
Ready, ready, go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great God. Board, if you would join me in front of the dais, we have a lot of great students that this is going to be a exciting night.
Lot of good things happening in Waco ISD. We've got almost a standing-room-only crowd tonight, so we're glad you're here. We'll begin the special recognition portion of this meeting by reintroducing our Pledge of Allegiance leaders from GW Carver Middle School. Antoinese Proctor, a seventh grader, says her favorite subject is math, but when she isn't pushing a pencil in the classroom, you'll find her making music in the band hall. She also enjoys acting. She looks forward to a career as a professional singer when she grows up. We want to recognize Antoinese's parents, Rachel McGruder, for sharing their talented daughter with us. Ms. McGruder, are you here?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. And Stephen Johnson is an eighth grader whose favorite subject is English. He's involved in the Theater Arts Program at school. He also enjoys singing, but when he grows up, he wants to be an actor. And we want to recognize Stephen's family for supporting him in his education. His grandmother, Linda Jackson, is here tonight. Linda, would you like to stand, please? And we also want to say thank you to our adoptive school partner, Barnes &amp; Noble Booksellers, for donating the books that our pledge leaders are receiving tonight. Thank you, you guys did a great job with the pledge. And of course, each year, in a highly anticipated event, the Waco ISD Education Foundation's Sure Prize Patrol makes its way across the district to surprise teachers with the exciting news that their grant proposals were selected for funding. Now, last Thursday, a combination of Foundation Board members, members of the Grants Committee, and district staff traveled to 12 Waco ISD campuses with the noise makers and the cowbells, the pom-poms, the balloons, but most importantly, the big checks in tow, ready to celebrate 24 deserving teachers and their innovative ideas and projects. Now, up on the screen, now hopefully you'll see pictures from each of the stops the Sure Prize Patrol made. Lots of smiling and excited teachers and campus staff. This year, the Education Foundation awarded a total of $107,015 back to Waco ISD through these grants to encourage and support innovative teaching. The grants will provide unique experiences for students, access to new technology, the ability to pursue talents, and a lot more. And tonight, Laura Robertson, the district's Education Foundation Specialist, Taylor Bledsoe, the Chairman of the Foundation Board, and Board Member Charlotte Henderson are here to present Waco ISD and trustees with a check, a big check, $107,015. The Foundation would like to thank all who applied for a grant this year, the members of the Board of Directors and the Grants Committee, district staff, the district's Board of Trustees, and a generous community of donors and sponsors who make this exciting opportunity possible. Congratulations to the 24 teachers who received funding. Waco ISD and the Education Foundation look forward to seeing what's in store when these projects come to life, and there's some exciting grants that our students are going to be able to take advantage of. And, oh, that check didn't bounce. Alan, the check did not bounce.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Taylor, thank you to the Foundation Board.
It was a great day.
And speaking of grants, Waco ISD was very proud to learn that three of our students are on the list of 400 students nationwide, and to think about that, only 400 across the country, and we had three of them named as Dell Scholars Class of 2017. Those three seniors, two from University High and one from Waco High, were selected to the prestigious Dell Scholars Program funded, of course, by Michael and Susan Dell Foundation. Students were selected as Dell Scholars because of their GPA. That's not exactly what you think when you normally hear GPA. In the Dell Foundation's case, GPA stands for grit, potential, and ambition. Winners will each get a $20,000 scholarship for college, a laptop, a Dell laptop, and textbook credits. The award is unique in the type of students it supports and how it nurtures those students on the path to a college degree. The program will empower the students by investing in their success, also providing emotional support to address lifestyle and financial challenges that all college students have to face. Now, the three Waco ISD Dell Scholars students from Waco tonight, one is not here with us. Christian Allen from Waco High School wasn't able to be here, but we do have here tonight, Christian's going to go to UT Austin. Alexandra Castillo from University High is here. Congratulations. Alex plays on the Trojan basketball team, and she hopes to attend UT Arlington. And we also have Samuel Ortega Rangel, the University High School. Samuel's the class president, was featured by Wacoan Magazine as a Wacoan Star Student in 2017. He has been accepted to the Engineering School at Texas A&amp;M. Congratulations to you, young man. We're very proud to have three Waco ISD students out of a nationwide class of 400. Congratulations to our 2017 Dell Scholars. Best of luck to you as you embark on your college journey. And we have more good news, but this time it is about one of our administrators at Waco ISD. The Association for Career and Technical Education's Administrator of the Year Award recognizes administrative CTE professionals at the school, district, county, state, or federal level who have demonstrated leadership in ensuring teacher and student success and have made significant contributions toward innovative, unique, and effective career and technical education programs. Now, this award, which encompasses the organization's Region Four, is given to only one finalist in our five-state region, and through the creation and development and expansion of Waco ISD's highly-successful Greater Waco Advanced Academies, I think we know who this finalist is. This administrator's developed innovative programming that's garnered local, state, and national recognition. She has a gift for bringing stakeholders together and creating cutting-edge opportunities for students. She's developed partnerships with multiple civic organizations to boost work-based learning and internships, and she's awfully proud of the students that she has who find fulfilling careers. It is an honor and a privilege tonight to announce the Association for Career and Technology Education 2017 Region Four Administrator of the Year is from Central Texas, Ms. Donna McKethin. Donna's the Director of Career and Technical Education for Waco ISD, and now getting this award, she qualifies as a national finalist. She'll be honored at the Association's National Awards Banquet in December, and we would not be surprised if she takes home another award after that event. Okay, thanks to Waco High School's Theater Director, Kalen Childress, who also doubles as the Speech and Debate Coach and the UIL Academic Coordinator. That school's seen continual improvement in student success in speech and debate activities in recent years. Coach Childress was once a debate star herself in high school, so it's only natural that she would expect the same from her students. Now, in the area of Lincoln-Douglas Debate, the school has only sent students to compete in district tournaments over the past two years. This year, only two students represented Waco High at the district tournament, and they were matched against other well-established teams with much more experience. But, after advancing from the preliminary rounds to the semifinals and then on to the final rounds, one Waco High student proved the Lions are a very tenacious pride. And tonight, we want to recognize Waco High Lincoln-Douglas Debater Nicholas Atkins. He's a District 18-5A second-place winner and regional qualifier. We also want to congratulate his coaches, Kalen Childress and his assistant coach, Corey Garrett, who couldn't be with us tonight. Great job, Kalen.
You're so great.
And Nick. And you notice Nick circled back around. We'll tell you why in a second. Last month, you may have heard the good fortune, or may have had the good fortune, to see the district's Night of One Act Plays. As the winner of the Waco ISD Middle School One Act Play Competition, Lake Air Montessori Magnet School was invited to perform the whodunit, The Real Inspector Hound, alongside University High's production of the tragedy Blood Wedding, and Waco High School's production of the drama The Red Door. Well, those performances were a warm-up for the high schools on their way to the District 18-5A One Act Play Competition. While neither high school's production advanced, one Waco High thespian earned a prestigious award at the district competition. And tonight, we want to recognize once again, Waco High Senior Nick Atkins for earning the title of Best Actor in the District One Act Play Competition. Nick, we'll see you again. This classify as a curtain call or an encore? Nick played multiple roles in the original drama, The Red Door, and bringing an original production to life on the stage and having it ready for contest is not an easy feat. However, the Waco High Theater Staff eagerly accepted the challenge for the many opportunities it offered their students and for their hard work in writing and directing an original play, which is a big deal. We want to recognize and congratulate playwright and technical director Corey Garrett, again who couldn't be here tonight, and theater director Kalen Childress again, another encore. And as you may have noticed, in addition to technical director, Corey was given the title of playwright, and he took on the challenge of writing and submitting an original play for contest. The Red Door tells the true story of one woman's plight to help hundreds of people in Little Rock, Arkansas during the height of the AIDS epidemic. Corey's initiative, creativity, and hard work adapting this true-to-life original production for the stage has provided the students and the staff and audiences with a rewarding, challenging, and unique experience that far supplants the fleeting glory of any award. Corey's not here, but congratulations to Corey one more time. Now, Waco ISD Choir students participated in the UIL Region Eight Solo and Ensemble Contest held at University High February 18th. The Waco High School Choirs had 25 students audition on a Class One solo with the hopes of advancing to state, and we are proud to announce that 19 of those 25 students advanced. In addition, three ensembles comprised of 12 students also advanced to state. So, as a result, many of the Waco High Choir students will be competing in the UIL Texas State Solo and Ensemble Competition in May with both a solo and an ensemble. Tonight, we want to recognize our Waco High State Vocalist and congratulate those musicians on their journey to the state competition. Isaac Arterburn, State Solo Qualifier and State Ensemble Qualifier. And a familiar face with a curtain call, Nick Atkins, solo and ensemble. Kerry Berkeley, Ensemble Qualifier. Libby Grant, a State Solo Qualifier. Emily Hines, Solo and Ensemble. Harper Hoover, a State Solo Qualifier. Kaylee Hoosier, a State Solo Qualifier and also ensemble. Olivia OJ Jackson, Solo and Ensemble. Alex Luhon, Ensemble. Chloe Maddox, Solo and Ensemble. Hallie Maddox, Solo Qualifier. Erica Powell, Solo Qualifier. Eduardo Reyes, also a Solo Qualifier. Alyssa Riggs, an Ensemble Qualifier. Ecclesia Velasco, a State Solo Qualifier. And Michael Wood, a Solo Qualifier. We also want to recognize the hard-working Waco High Choral Department, Glenn Beal, Candace Wyatt, and Kerry Forehand. Congratulations to them. Well, we've got UH, University High's Choir Solo and Ensemble Group here as well. The growing Trojan Choir Program was also represented at the Region Eight Solo and Ensemble Contest. This year, another Trojan Vocalist has achieved a superior one-rating on a Class One Solo or Ensemble and also advanced to state. And tonight, we would like to recognize a very talented freshman from the University High School Choir who qualified as a State Soloist and will join members of the Waco High Choir to represent Waco ISD at the prestigious Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest next month in Austin. Please welcome Felicia Marquez. Since this is just Felicia's first year, we expect many great things to come for her for years ahead. Also want to congratulate the University High Choir Directors for this program's continued success, the Assistant Choir Director Eric Wolf, and the Choir Director Lucy Murphy. A freshman, wow. All right, University High's Band, Solo and Ensemble. In February, the Trojan's Mighty Trojan Band and the Waco High School Lion Pride Band competed at the UIL Solo and Ensemble Contest. Both bands represented Waco well with an impressive number of students advancing to the state contest next month, and tonight, we're recognizing these outstanding musicians along with their dedicated instructors. Under the direction of Archie Lee Hatton IV, 28 members of the University High School Mighty Trojan Band are advancing to the UIL State Solo and Ensemble Contest. I get that right, 28? Good job. That's great. Congratulations to the following Trojan musicians who are in First Division ratings and are advancing to state. Some of the members couldn't be here tonight, but we will announce the ones who are. Omar Martinez, a clarinet quartet. Pamela Reboller, a clarinet quartet. Ariana Salinas, a flute quartet. Felipe Ramirez, saxophone quartet. Jordan Crawford, also a saxophone quartet. Samuel Sabalos, a saxophone quartet. And the entire quartet is here. Selena Gonzalez, also saxophone quartet. Or may Selena's not here. Not here, okay. All right. Other band members? Jose Tiscorino, Nebraska Quintet. Jairo Valenciana, a brass quintet. Anna Gonzalez, a percussion ensemble. Jose Mayab, a percussion ensemble. And last but not least, Roman Rodriguez, a percussion ensemble. Congratulations as well to the Assistant Band Directors, Justin Lindsay and Arthur Torres, and of course, the Head Band Director again, Archie Lee Hatton IV. Well, the Waco High School Lion Pride Band will also be well-represented at the UIL State Solo and Ensemble Contest in Austin. Under the direction of Director Scott Stuler, 29 band members qualified to compete at the state competition. Tonight, we're recognizing the members of the Lion Pride Band who earn Division One ratings and are advancing to state. First up, Hallie Maddox, flute, solo, and woodwind trio. Again, Kerry Berkeley Jr., the woodwind trio. Alejandro Rodriguez, the woodwind trio. Brenna Ashby, the flute quartet. Maria Brusino, flute quartet. Alyssa Ferdinand, the flute quartet. Sarah Brown, saxophone quartet. Cornelius Manning, saxophone quartet. Melody Villanueva, saxophone quartet. Alexis Gallegos, trumpet trio. Luis Gonzalez, trumpet trio. Christian Ramos, trumpet trio. Elizabeth Garcia, brass quintet. Harper Hoover, also brass quintet. Jonathan Sostida, brass quintet. Vincenzo Greer, brass quintet. Josue Morales, brass quintet. Andrew Ramirez, brass quintet. Also brass quintet, Alyssa Salazar. Demetrius Allen, percussion ensemble. Grace Yates, percussion ensemble. Assistant Band Directors Tyler Sage, Rachel Whipple's not with us here tonight, and Head Band Director Scott Stuler. Waco ISD is extremely proud to have ample amounts of red and purple representing our school district and our city during this prestigious band concert. Is Waco ISD good and fine arts or what? And we have one more group we want to recognize, the Waco High Boys Soccer Team. Gentlemen, you did us proud this year. Lions ended the season with an overall record of 23, 2, and 1. They outscored their opponents, get this, 87 to 20. On their way to a record-breaking year, they won two tournaments. They were crowned the regional finalist and the district runner-up. In the playoffs, the Lions defeated teams that were ranked, get this, number one, number two, and number eight in the region. They had some chemistry going. And for the first time in school history, the Waco High Lions Soccer Team was ranked as one of the top five teams in the state. They finished the year ranked as one of the top 10 teams in Texas statewide. A round of applause for the soccer team. And a number of them are here with us tonight, your 2016-75A Regional Finalist. We'll announce the ones who are here. Alejandro Martinez, also a member of the Academic All-State Team. Raoul Toribio, All-District First Team. Victor Gomez, Academic All-State Team. All-District First Teamer Adolfo Rodriguez. A Super-Centex Boys Soccer Team, All-District and Academic All-State, Jonathan Gonzalez. And an All-District Second Teamer Juan Arroyo. The Defensive Player of the Year for the district and a member of the Super-Centex Boys Soccer Team, Ildefonso Vasquez. All-District Second Team and another Academic All-State Teamer Edwin Almaraz. All-district second-team and another Academic All-State teamer, Edwin Almaraz. All-district second-teamer and Academic All-State, Arturo Palacios. All-district second-teamer Johnny Escobedo. Waco ISD Academic Achiever, all-district first-team, Super-Centex Boys Soccer Team Honorable Mention, Student Manager Elizabeth Mosley. And Diana Enhel. And Student Manager Elian Perez. Also want to congratulate Assistant Coaches Rodrigo Bariantos and Ramiro Salazar and James Yasco, and Head Coach Chris Kaler couldn't be here tonight because he had to be at a middle-school game, but we want to recognize him for this super-successful season. He was also named the Super-Centex Boys Soccer Coach of the Year. Gentlemen, congratulations, fantastic season. Thank you for doing us proud, Waco ISD. We are so proud of you. Congratulations. And that concludes our special recognition for the evening.
Congratulations to everyone who was recognized this evening. And as Mr. Geethson mentioned, they're actually going to do one more performance of that one act play, The Red Door, this Sunday at 3:00 at Waco High. If anybody hasn't seen it yet and wants to go see it, I think it'll be the final public performance this year. No one has signed up for Audience for Guests, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. I have been asked to pull items W and Y for no action, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of items W and Y. So move. Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Pettis. Any comments, questions, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, consent agenda is adopted. We've already taken care of item 10A, so we'll move down to item 10B. Consider hiring administrators. Dr. Kane?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. We have two names that we're bringing before you tonight. One is the Assistant Principal, a recommendation for the Assistant Principal at Mountain View, Ms. Melissa Reese. Ms. Reese? Oh, okay. I'm sorry, there's a pillar there. Ms. Reese has been in education for 11 years. Before applying for the Assistant Principal position, Ms. Reese served as the IB PYP Coordinator at Mountain View for the past three years. Prior to coming to Waco ISD, she served as a third and fourth-grade teacher at an elementary school in Colleen ISD. She has a Bachelor's of Science in Interdisciplinary Studies at Tarleton in 1996, and she completed a Master's of Education from the University of Texas at Arlington in 2014. In her leisure time, she enjoys spending time with her family, including her husband, Chris. Is your family with you? Okay, Chris, if you would stand up, and three daughters, Lindsay, Ashley, and Lillian, and four dogs, are they here? You left the dogs at home? Okay. Okay. So, if you'll hold on just a moment, we'll make the recommendation for both employees. The second one is for the Assistant Principal at Bells Hill Elementary, Ms. Gillian Atkins, no kin to our fearless leader, Pat Atkins, has been in education for four years. Before moving into administration, she taught third-grade math and science for one year and fifth-grade math for three years. She most recently served as an administrator intern at Shankland Elementary in Luling ISD before accepting the recommendation to be Assistant Principal at Bells Hill Elementary School. She received her Bachelor's in 2013 at Texas State University, and in 2016, she received her Master's of Education in Educational Administration. In her leisure time, she enjoys spending time with her family, as well as drinking coffee with her friends, running, spending time at the river, taking road trips, and attending baseball games. Do you have your family with you?
I don't.
Well, that's okay, your family's right there, I see them.
Our Bells Hill family.
Get used to it. So, President Atkins, those are my recommendations for those two positions.
All right, I will entertain a motion to accept the administration's recommendation. Thank you, Ms. Pettis. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Manning. This side of the table's leading right now. Four motions.
No, Kerry's been carrying y'all.
Let me just say, don't take any offense, but I'm not used to this being people named Atkins getting more camera time than I get during a board meeting.
So we're not asking you to change your name.
All right, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, ladies, welcome aboard. All right, item C, approve the bid renewal for the bank depository services. We're voting on separate, so someone can abstain? Dr. Kane?
Yes, we have, it's time to renew our bank depository service. We have been with Extraco Bank. It has been excellent service. We could not be more pleased. We did do a request for proposal. Received three, one from JP Morgan Chase, one's from Wells Fargo, and one from Extraco. The original term of the contract was for two years, starting in September 2015, ending August this year, with a provision for two additional two-year terms with the same terms and conditions as the original contract. And I would like, the district would like to exercise the first two-year renewal period, which would be from September 1st this year through August 31st, 2019, at the same terms and conditions as the original contract. And we have been in contact with Extraco, and they are in agreement with this renewal. So I am recommending that you approve to renew Extraco Bank for the bank depository services as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. Is there a motion? All right, sorry, we won't have a deposit.
We'll have to get up.
I move that we accept the administration recommendation that the Board Trustees approve the renewal to Extraco Bank for the bank depository services as presented.
All right, thank you, Ms. Manning. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Teakell. All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
And Ms. Gonzalez, if you'd accord me as an extension, recuse myself.
All right, we'll move on to item D, teacher signing bonus at Indian Spring Middle School. Dr. Kane?
Yes, sir, we brought this item to the board previously for J.J. Hines and Brook Avenue and Carver, and we did not bring Indian Spring at the time because it had a TIPS grant, but that TIPS grant has run out and will not be available, so we are asking that we have this signing bonus for Indian Spring as well.
All right. Any questions, comments, discussion? I'll entertain a motion. Thank you, Ms. Pettis. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion also carries unanimously. Reports and discussion, Lone Star Governance Model, we've got a goal-progress measure presentation. Dr. Kane?
Well, actually, if you want a presentation, you can have one. But one of the goal-progress measures was monitoring the percent of K1 and 2 students reading on grade level. It was your goal-progress measure 1.1, 1.2, and 1.3. And if you will turn to the first page, which is kindergarten progress, the baseline was 45%, and the goal was 45%. And so at the April progress measure, it was at 49%, which...
All right.
And then first grade, the September baseline was 36%, the April progress measure was 44%, but the progress goal was at 50% at that point in time. So we know we have work to do in first grade. In second grade, and in second grade, the baseline was 43%. We had 53% at the April progress measure, and our goal was 60%. So we're going to be looking closely at what we're doing in kindergarten, which surpassed our goal. And this is the first report that we have, actually, this is the one goal that we report four times a year, the progress measure, because the primary goal is the third-grade reading score. So if you, Ms. Gaylor Reed is here, if you would like to ask some questions, and so is Ms. Kim Ellis, but it is just a report.
All right.
And we will be asked to vote on this at the next meeting.
And even those where we are not to the goal for this year, they've all gone up substantially from where they were in September, correct?
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, they have. And it's interesting to note, too, that this time last year, we were sitting at, in kindergarten, we were sitting at 36%. And first grade was sitting at 37%, and second grade was sitting at 45%. So from last year at this time to this year at this time, there is significant growth.
That is why pre-K is so important to us, and we fight with the legislature every year, because the more emphasis we have in pre-K on developmental skills and just school skills and reading.
Exactly. And although kindergarten this year was set at 45, just to have that continuous growth, trust us, whenever we say kindergarten will not stop at 45%, we will definitely shoot, continue on, but to really have this first year of everybody moving forward and having that momentum is what we're looking at.
Ms. Cordaway?
Well, you actually answered my question. I was, I was looking at the kindergarten progress at 45, and then wondering kind of what had happened in first grade with them starting at 36, but that makes sense if kindergarten ended at 36%.
Exactly.
Okay.
And also, it is important to note, too, that we also have more implementation with fidelity of ISST, of the progress monitoring tool itself.
I had to...
Go ahead.
On here, why is kindergarten the goal? Did we set the goal that low? You know, every, all the other ones seem to have a significant kind of goal-progress measure.
Sure, sure.
Or target, and I wondered, just, yeah.
And that, well, the first rationale behind that was because of the significant number of kindergarten students that we have that are coming in that have not had our pre-K, our phenomenal pre-K program here in Waco ISD, but just some, just kind of getting them accoladed to public schools, school setting, procedures, that whole routine bit, and so that's why, that, that next year, if you look at for the, for the board goal of what we set to, it is significantly higher than, than our 45% this year.
Other questions or comments?
A question. So last week, we spent some time talking about, oh, gosh, well, we were talking about whether the goal was, or the progress measure was a good progress measure or not. So I'm wondering, now that you've produced these three and you've taken a look at the scores, do you think this is a good progress measure for the ultimate goal of increasing our passage rate in the third grade, right?
Yes, ma'am. And I think whenever we look at the, the research behind, statewide, the research behind ISST itself, we have five-plus years of research that totally backs what, to prove how, how the ongoing progress monitoring and the ongoing individualized instruction is given to the student. And so, but here is something on the sidebar note, is that we also now, for the first time in Waco ISD, have two other points of data that we have not had consistently across the district before in Waco. And so now, we can actually look at three points of data and draw a trend line and try to see, just really looking at the comparison piece of the other data, but this is the one that truly has, it's a one-time shot, it's just a snapshot, once a month, continuous growth. Where are we at right now?
So the, when do we take the last picture for the progress goal?
In May, in May. And the, it's usually with that, done within the first two weeks of the month.
We take this measure every month, they're on it every month. We're reporting to you quarterly per the calendar that you set, but we monitor that data monthly.
Okay, so is this April progress measure testing that was just done? Or is it April progress measure because you're reporting it to us right now? I'm just wondering, are we going to see much change between the orange and the green?
You, you will see more change because this was actually, the numbers were drawn from the first two-week April ISIP. So, so we're talking, this was the beginning of April. And so, so whenever we run it again...
Five, six weeks, maybe?
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I want to question you. Okay, so if, so if you, okay, I'm looking at second grade, and your April is 53%, and our goal is 60. But yet, from September to April, we only had 10 percentage points improvement. It's probably unlikely we're going to hit that 60.
And that is exactly what we are addressing with the, with the reading coaches and going on, and the coaching on the campuses. That is exactly. What are we doing to fill in the gap? Because we know that this is, this is one piece of instructional tool that that teachers can use. So just as much as this gives us an ongoing progress monitoring, we also need to look and see the instruction that's going on in the classroom, and how we're really, truly individualizing the reading instruction. And that's why we have our coaches.
Okay, so then, how much growth should, do you want to see in a year? So if you look at first grade, and we have 36 as our baseline, and with a goal of 50, I'm thinking when we set the goals, we set them as achievable.
Sure, sure.
So we have 17% percentage points for second grade, 14 for first, and then because of the uncertainty with kindergarten. Okay, so do you feel like you'll change your methodology on how you set your goals based on how you're doing this year? Or do you still think these are achievable, these were achievable and would be going forward?
Right. I understand, and I think that these goals are achievable. I think right now, what we're looking at is because we have a consistent piece of, of collecting the data, that we can start receiving this commonality of vocabulary across the district. So whenever we're talking about these skills with, with these particular students, we can really hone in on. Whereas if we're looking at all these other different types of assessments, within you tend to miss the momentum, the synergy of everyone having that same dialogue and the same vocabulary. Whereas if we, I truly believe that if we use, keep to the goals, and then with the push of understanding in the classroom, the true instructional of the guided reading, of our shared reading time, of really honing in, and really having that deep dialogue about what, what does that student need? Where is that gap?
So, so when we're looking at just the data and the math, it's District Y.
Yes.
Do these numbers, are these numbers consistent? Would you say across second grade and all of our elementary schools, 53% is what you're seeing? Or is there such wide diversity between campuses that you have the majority of our second graders achieving the goal, but then just a couple of campuses that are performing at a much lower level that's pulling it down?
Well, as we look at the numbers, I mean, we're looking at a variation with all schools, but we have within the realm, we have as high as 73% at some campuses. We have also a 33% at one campus. And so there is variation, considerable variation between some campuses. So that's why I think we're, we feel pretty positive about the numbers as they stand. Much room for growth, obviously, much room for improvement. But we are now able, as she was talking about, and she meets with our coaches every Friday to analyze data, to look at where we are and how we're moving with that. So we are targeting those campuses for fidelity of process and fidelity of program, because we see where we have more fidelity of using the tools that are in place, then we have the greater number of increases.
Okay, and then, so, so I'm wondering, you know, we're moving to this model, and it's really data-driven model here, and I'm wondering, as you are preparing to report on our progress, do you feel like you are, you feel like you're putting more pressure on one particular end of the spectrum that you wouldn't ordinarily, or are you, is it changing the way you're doing anything, is my question? And then, if so, isn't it a healthy change? Or not so healthy?
I think it's a new awareness that it not only puts a view to our teachers that validates what they're doing. I think when we only have a star measure at third, fourth, and fifth grade at the elementary level, then that progress is not only, not monitored as strictly many times, but it's also not validated as far as the growth and the, and the potential there. So I think we've got mixed, mixed emotions. We've got some campuses that, you know, they understand that it's now coming to you every four, four times a year, three months, and that that also heightens... And that that also heightens the goal on campus with fidelity of moving to ask questions more. We have had more and more teachers who have who have come and said, help me, I want my kids, I don't want my children to be on the lower end of this spectrum. I want them to improve. So I think it's opening up conversations that have not been there before.
And as a teacher in Waco for many, many years, I can speak that our K through two teachers, they are extremely dedicated and hardworking teachers. And and so to really hone in on and have a continuous methodology of and with pedagogy of how to truly deliver, how do you teach kids how to read? It's just not just about thinking, but how do we truly do the whole gamut of reading? What what this has done is that it's brought synergy and focus to where we are not just all talking at different pieces. We're all talking one united voice. And so it's getting in with our veteran teachers who know what they're doing. Share that knowledge because now we have a common language. Talk amongst each other, share and collaborate, you know, come to curriculum support. Talk to your coaches because your coaches are going to have the same language with you to give you that safety net and that support, you know? And I think that, being in the district for twenty-four years, I can tell you, we've never had that kind of momentum forward where we were all, at least we have the common vocabulary. And there's something about all of us flying in the same direction, you know, so. And that's what we're trying to really push on each campus. As each sixteen elementary campuses are trying to really push our reading instruction, if we can all speak the same language and have that same expectation, the power, then when we collaborate, we're all, we're all have that same goal in mind.
I had a question, but then I remembered the answer, so.
Okay, so is there a downside? Would you like us to consider anything, you know, I guess we were going to, I don't know if we revisit, do we revisit this goal four times?
Yes, exactly, exactly this goal.
This particular goal four times, okay.
I thought he said we weren't supposed to change the goal before 2020. We can look at the progress measures.
Just the progress.
Yeah, I think the goal is when he wants us to hold those steady till 2020.
Do we change the goal?
Change the progress measure any or it sounds like this is working, right?
It is. And the only thing is what the the teacher in me and the reading teacher in me, the piece that I would love to see maybe that that we can have a discussion about at a different time, would be how to bring in the element of a face-to-face interaction with teacher to student. So, for example, we look at our data here that is from a computerized system where it's truly individualized. But then let's sit down and also looking to see where are we at whenever we're administering a running record. That's done one-on-one with student to teacher. So now then we're looking at same reading, same goals, same pieces. But now this is what the computer says, this is what the teacher says. And if our data is not lining up, then it opens up that discussion to help with instruction. And I think that, so that way then you have that that face-to-face interaction as well with data as well as computer.
We use this data because it is not the subject, it is on the screen, the kids take that test. It is not with running record, the children reading and the teacher marking if they know the words. And so that's the variation there, but it's also such a key component that needs to be added to the overall picture.
Okay, I'm going to ask my question anyway. So if I remember correctly, you were saying that IStation is kind of objective-based, isn't?
Very much standard, yes, ma'am. It's a very, you, it's all based upon our state standards. And where is the student at with developmental processes of learning how to read and reading to think?
And so when a student completes that specific standard, does it move them on to another one?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Think of it as all of us taking our GRE. You know, the better, the better you you do, the higher it goes and it just keeps going. It's a sliding scale and that's exactly how IStation works.
And does IStation kind of pull out a report for teachers to kind of say, okay, this student needs help in this?
Very specific to the point where it will also give you intervention lessons, targeted, individualized instruction.
Even notes to the parents.
Yes.
So do you, so do you have kids that, is this on a percent, like a hundred percent? So do you have kids that are just, is it a good measure because they're beyond the grade level?
You can see that, you can see exactly, is the student based upon the skills that they are working on. You can easily see, is this within grade level standards or is this working below or above? Yes, ma'am.
It does not top them off, there's no stopping point with it.
All right, other questions? Got it covered? Yep. And with that, the right end of the dais is now taking the lead. Thank you, ladies. All right, we will move on to item eleven B, Summer and Fall Acceleration Report, Dr. McClanahan.
Good evening, Dr. Kane and Board members. I'm excited to present to you tonight. At a meeting at the beginning of January with Jeanette McCowen, the president of MCC, Londa Kerivo, who is the High School Pathways Coordinator for MCC, and I were asked if we could put together a board presentation for the MCC Board for their February Board Meeting. And so what I'm going to show you is exactly the same information that we showed the MCC Board about our program that we have cultivated for dual credit with MCC. So currently, we are offering three different options to students in Waco ISD in regards to dual credit. The first is a, just a transfer hour accrual where students can take courses as they fit into their schedules because they are of interest or because they fulfill a graduation requirement and they allow the student to get a weighted grade point for that course. The second one is that if students can accrue eighteen to twenty-two hours, MCC has a program called Plus One where if students take courses within a certain number of transfer courses, that they will guarantee them a associate's degree within one calendar year of high school graduation. Then, last year, we started our Accelerate Program, our early college program, where we have five different degree pathways that students can pursue, where they can actually finish their associate's degree by the time that they graduate from high school. So we started that first Accelerate Group at the beginning of the summer because we let our current, our last year's freshmen apply, but they came into the program as sophomores and in order to keep them on their degree pathway, they had to agree to take courses in the first summer session that they would have taken as freshmen on their degree pathways. So in summer session, and MCC's academic year starts with the first summer session. So that's why our report starts with the summer session from last last June. We had a hundred and seven students that took two hundred and three courses. During that summer session, we started off with an orientation and a tour of the campus. We passed out their books on the first day of of the summer session. And at the end of the summer session, we had a pass rate of ninety-three percent for those students taking summer courses. Then, we had a number of students that wanted to participate but couldn't make this first summer session because they were already committed to other programs. So they took classes during second summer session. We had eighteen students that completed thirty-two courses and they had a success rate of ninety-seven percent. If you look at our la, our last three years of dual credit enrollment, this gives you a picture of what it looks like. So over the last two years, thanks to funding by the TRE from November of two thousand and fifteen, we have seen an increase in our dual credit enrollment of two hundred and fifty-three percent, which is really phenomenal and the MCC Board was absolutely blown away with that number. We have actually moved from the fifth-largest dual credit program that MCC serviced to the largest dual credit program that MCC services. To break that down for you, you can see here that with, looking at number of credit hours that students have actually completed, you can see that we have gone two years ago from students completing two hundred and seventy-six courses to completing one thousand four hundred and seventy-five courses. If we put that into a dollar value and we do it by credit hour cost at MCC, that is a savings of about a little over a half of a million dollars at MCC cost. If we put that in credit hour cost for UT, that is about one point six million dollars in tuition savings. If we look at our success rates by grade, you can see that they range from eighty-five to ninety-seven percent. And I will take some of the blame for that eighty-five percent because I was thinking a little physically with our our freshmen. And what I was trying to do was come up with a way that I could cut book costs by alternating campuses and what class they took and so that I could flow the books in between. And what we found with our freshmen is that one of the groups did significantly better than the other because of the order in which they took the courses. So now we know, moving forward, that we want to have that Learning Frameworks course as the first course for both groups, regardless of whether we have to have extra books because we know that that really increased the percentage of students who succeeded. But I will tell you that MCC was extremely pleased with these passing rates. And these are combinations of students who took courses online, students who took courses with MCC instructors, and students who took courses with Waco ISD teachers who are employed as adjunct instructors for MCC. So if we look at expenses for the program, what we saw is that about seventy-eight percent of the students qualified for tuition waivers by MCC. And then, thanks to the tax ratification election, we were able to pick up the costs for those other twenty-two percent. And then we covered all of the remaining expenses for fees, books, and any other materials that the students needed for their classes. Now, one of the most exciting parts was our Accelerate Program. So currently, between the freshman and sophomore classes at University and Waco High, we have a hundred and twenty-six students that are either freshmen or sophomores in that program. For next year, I have four hundred and ten applications for that Accelerate Program. As part of our district testing plan, we have actually been TSI testing. We have now finished, as of today, I finished the first round at Tennyson. So we have now tested at all of the middle schools. And we already have a little over a hundred of those students qualified for Accelerate with their passing TSI scores. I actually start tomorrow with the first round of retesting at Lake Eyre. And so we expect that by the time that we roll around to the summer, which is where we started qualifying students last year, we will already have about half of those students qualified with TSI scores. So we are looking last year, going into the summer, and by the end of our little boot camp that we had where the students worked on TSI, they worked on Play-Doh and retesting for the TSI, about eighty percent of the kids ended up qualifying by the end of that. So if we apply that same percentage here, we're looking at having about three hundred and twenty-eight students that would qualify for Accelerate for next year. And that means the program has a possible increase of participation by about a hundred and sixty-seven percent. And I really owe that to you guys for, you know, your generosity in in funding the dual credit program. Because I will tell you, not only have I heard tremendous things from the students about the types of courses that they can take, but I have heard absolutely amazing things from the MCC professors about our students who are sitting in their classes, about how they could not tell the difference between them and their actual MCC college-age students. And the amazing stories that I heard from the students about when they were put into groups and they are forced to work with a student who's forty, who is in their class but is in their group that they have to present with for projects. It's really been amazing.
Dr. McCowen, I want to say, I think all we did was toss you the keys and you can grow this car, right?
Yeah. Well, thanks. And I, I really, you know, I've had a lot of support from Dr. McDurham and from Dr., from Ms. McKethen because our CTE and the academic dual credit fit together so well. What we've done, when Ms. McKethen met with the new director of CTE for the state, one of the things that he kept talking about was that we should be looking at a seamless program, that CTE and Advanced Academics AP courses should all be dovetailed together. And so she actually called me from the meeting where he said that. And so I said, oh, I can do that. It was a Friday and I hadn't left for the day. So I put together by career cluster, all of the dual credit courses that we offer, all the AP courses that we offer and all the CTE courses that we offer by career cluster and sent it back to her so that I could show her, oh, yeah, we we can easily talk to kids in these academies about all of these courses as one. And she actually then emailed it to the director of CTE for the state and he thinks that we're pioneers, that we're already doing all of these things, which we are. But we actually could could put together exactly what he saw in his mind. And so it's just really exciting right now to be out and talk to the kids and see how excited they are about all the different options that they have.
Do you want to make one clarification?
Yeah.
It's very nice of you to thank the board for our generosity. But the truth is, we need to express that gratitude to the voters and the taxpayers.
Exactly.
This district who showed up to the polls in November two thousand and fifteen and agreed to raise their own property tax rate thirteen cents so that we can put additional instructional aids in the pre-K kindergarten first grade class, second grade classes for the reading program we just discussed. And we're able to pick up all tuition costs so that every high school student in Waco ISD that's past the TSI can take every dual credit course they want at no cost to their families. And and that was a direct result of the voters entrusting us with those additional tax dollars. And then you're successfully implementing it, so thank you.
And I want you to know that that really has come to fruition, that what they saw when they voted for that, that is exactly what we're seeing happening, is that students that would not have had access to those classes before are now able to take those classes. So, yes.
So how does this program compare to other school districts in the state? Are there any other districts that are paying, picking up costs like we are?
There are a few. They usually have some incidental costs for the students. They might ask them to pick up the book costs. But if it's an early college program, it's actually a requirement that the district bear the brunt of the cost of books and the tuition. But since we didn't follow that ECHS pathway because it had so many restrictions on classes and the way that we had to offer core courses just to the kids that were in that program and we weren't really sure that we could make a whole class out of those students, you know, it really is, you know, pretty pioneering that we've decided that we're going to step forward and do this for our kids that the college couldn't cover.
So is there any other school district in the county that's doing this?
Not that I know of.
I would keep going, but I'm not. Well, I'm just, I just, I I think that not only do we need to thank our community, but but I want our community to understand that we're not just meeting some minimum standard that everybody else was already doing, but that we're providing more in Waco ISD than any of, anybody here is doing. And.
Well, I can tell you, Ms. Teak, that there. There are already community members that are realizing that because I have seen kids come into the district from Riker, from Vanguard, from, from Midway, who are actually coming back to Waco ISD because of those opportunities that we've offered the kids. And so I think that that, you know, is really exactly what we were wanting this, wanting to happen when we started.
Wide enrollment, District White is up this year, a couple hundred students. I also want to congratulate you. You know, when we initially talked about the Accelerate Program, I was one of the ones that questioned whether we would have the the proper amount of rigor and whether a fifteen-year-old freshman would be ready to do college-level course. And you're right, I mean, the freshman passage rate was slightly lower than than the sophomore. But forty-five percent of those students made As in those college-level courses.
Yes.
It was actually higher than the sophomore. And so your trust of those students and your ability to work with the teachers has really helped make this program successful. So thank you for following through on that. Other questions or comments?
Appreciate you, thank you.
All right, we are down to item twelve announcements, Dr. Cambridge, Mr. Geeson.
We don't get student outcome, we don't get minutes for that.
Was that student outcomes?
Do we get weeks for that? Do we get minutes for that?
Tough act to follow, Scott. I've got some announcements, a lot of good things happening in Waco ISD. We saw a lot of special recognitions earlier. University High's postseason run in softball going on right now, tonight. Not going so well in the first game, losing eight to nothing against Corsicana. Game one of a three-game set, so game two will be tomorrow night in Corsicana. And game three, hopefully they'll need that to be determined. On the baseball diamond, Waco High and University High's baseball teams play their final rivalry showdown of the year tomorrow night at seven PM at the Waco ISD Athletic Complex. showdown of the year tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at the Waco ISD Athletic Complex. Tomorrow and Saturday, we have some athletes competing in the regional track meet at Sam Houston State. Five Waco High students and one from university will be trying to qualify for state. And tomorrow's also College and Career Day at Guaca. That goes all day until 4 o'clock. And I would like to say 16 Guaca students were recently offered jobs by Baylor Scott &amp; White once they graduate. So good for Guaca and Baylor Scott &amp; White. 30th Annual Waco High Art Show continues tomorrow and Saturday at the Lions Den from 8:30 to 6:00. If you're in the mood for some jazz tomorrow night, and Waco High's pack all the district's jazz bands, Lake Eyre, Carver, Indian Spring, Tennyson, and Waco High groups will be there as well as a special guest, the Waco Jazz Orchestra, all coming together to perform an evening of jazz and that is free to attend. So if you're in the mood for some music, and Saturday in that same building at the Waco High Drill Team Spring Show at 7:00 PM. Saturday's also a big day for Waco ISD students in Austin, the history fair, state history fair will be going on. More than 30 students from Waco High, from Waco ISD I should say, and 21, I think it's a record high from Tennyson, will be at that event. Next two weeks in the district, test weeks and of course exams. Next week, star testing the week of May 8th. Next week is also Teacher Appreciation Week. There's some Cinco de Mayo celebrations on a number of campuses. And May 11th is the date one of our teachers will show us how smart she is. Lindsay Henry, one of our first grade teachers from Dean Highland, will be on Jeopardy as part of their teachers tournament. Only 15 educators nationwide qualified for that tournament and she, it's already been taped to do, it's a secret how well she did, but she told us she had a great time. So you can see that May 11th on KCNTV. The next day, May 12th, will highlight some of our other winners will be headed to three campuses to honor and surprise our elementary and secondary teachers of the year as well as our Virginia DePuy First Year Teacher Award. And if you want to go out to eat on Friday the 13th or rent a limo, might be out of luck. That's prom night for both University High and Waco High, both those campuses. And special thanks tonight to Cotton Palace King Johnny Bledsoe and his wife Sally for their special gift of $5,000 to the Education Foundation honoring the Cotton Palace Court and the key players in that production. Bledsoes have designated those funds to go to restoring the planetarium at Waco High. So a lot of good things happening as we start to wind down the season, but those are just a few of the things and have a good weekend and got some options there.
Thank you, Mr. Geeson. Any other announcements from the dais? All right, then hearing no objection, they'll stand adjourned.